Okay, we will call this August 27th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. So for those that might be online, you can dial on telephone line 719-359-4580. Webinar ID 847-3960-7201. Okay, let's do the roll call.
Commissioner Cowan?
Hi.
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Present.
Commissioner Conrington?
Present.
Commissioner Waller?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Siperly?
Here.
Commissioner Houghton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, do I hear a motion on the receipt of minutes from the June 25th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 25th.
Okay, Commissioner. Conrington made a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Siperly seconded. Any discussion? Carolyn? Okay, then let's do a quick, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Uh.
Right? Any opposed? No? Okay, so the meetings are accepted as written?
It says unanimously.
Unanimous. Okay, do we have any comments from citizens? Appearing for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll close that and move on to new items. First item is Planning File 17-24, Design Variants at 308 Seventh Street, Juicy Lucy Awning. Emery?
Okay, Emery Ellingson, Community Development Department, presenting our Planning File 1724, and I will be sharing my screen. Okay, so tonight we have a design variance for 308 Seventh Street. It is for Juicy Lucy, so 308 Seventh Street, and what the request is, is for consideration for relief from standards. Non-residential design standards for awning canopies and marquees for installation of an awning. So again, it's on Seventh Street, surrounded by other commercial uses, and then across the street is public street, public space and the railroad right-of-way. Property is zone M2 mixed-use, and this is the site how it currently exists. And so you can see out front, that's the outdoor dining area where the awning would be installed in two sections. One covering this area and the second covering this area. And the reason we're here is this has two aspects of the variance. The first is any awning that extends more than five feet from the building. That's the maximum an awning can extend, and this is going to go further than that. So that's action item one. And so staff has recommended approval of that variance, a design variance with findings and conditions on page at seven and nine of the staff report. For reference, so here's an awning that's less than five feet from the building facade. So that would be allowed by code, and this is going farther than five, which is why that action item is here. And then action item two is about material. And so code requires awnings to be canvas, and the applicant is proposing, it's called Umbrella. It's an alternative material, but technically it's not canvas. And so that's the second variance, design variance. And so staff has also recommended approval of this with findings and conditions on pages seven through nine. So just a little background information, Juicy Lucy, like other restaurants in the downtown area, they do lease city-owned public right-of-way for the outdoor dining area. So the restaurants downtown, most of their actual property end with the building. And so that outdoor dining area, that area is leased by, leased from the city. Their annual leases and the lease rate is $3 per square foot. And so this is the area that Juicy Lucy has had. They've leased it from the city since 2014. Their current basically shade system is umbrellas. And so the intent of this variance requests to install a retractable awning, to provide a little bit more shade. And then, right now, as is required with all the outdoor dining leases, Juicy Lucy does maintain an insurance policy, a general liability policy, with a minimum of $1 million city listed as a, as a holder. So that's the background of that aspect of it. Now, tonight, what we're doing is we're talking about a design variance. And so this is a little different than a standard variance, and that it's a little more flexible. And so here are the design variance criteria, and they're split into two sections. This should say section A, and this should, this is section B. And so this top one, they have to meet all three. And then the bottom, it has to meet at least four. So it's a little bit different, where you have standard variance, it has to meet all seven. Design variance, there's a little bit more flexibility. So I'll go through all of these, how they relate to the different action items. So for action item one, for extending more than five feet, for section A, staff found, one, the variance request, it doesn't harm public health, safety, or welfare. Two, it's in general conformance with the comprehensive plan and stated purpose and intent of the code. So really, when you go to intent and purpose of non-residential design, it talks about protecting and enhancing the visual interest, character, and quality of a non-residential mixed-use area, which a retractable awning, providing shade for customers, creating that sense of place, definitely meets that purpose and intent. The variance request, it will not violate building or fire code requirements. So prior to installation, applicant would have to get a building permit where they would, the building department would review their installation, how they're going to attach it to the building. So it wouldn't be allowed to be installed unless it met those requirements. So that's section A, needs to meet all three, staff finds that it does meet all three. And then the second section, section B, that's where it can be a little more flexible. And so of the six criteria here, staff has found that this variance request meets four of the six. So one, variance requested advances the goals and policies or achieves the intent. So really, the intent of the standard is for awnings over a doorway generally, and to kind of keep that limited to just the doorway and the entrance area. So code, in this case, wasn't really thinking about outdoor dining areas extending past really your entry, entryway. And so really, and also too, the outdoor dining leases encourages creating shade by using individual umbrellas. So it already kind of has that intent of creating a nice shaded dining area. Two, subject property is exceptional in some way compared to other properties throughout the zone district. So there's two ways, not all properties within the M2 zoning district are restaurants, and not all of them have outdoor dining areas. So that's a unique characteristic of the property. And then secondly, too, even with the restaurants that out, that are outdoor dining areas, Seventh Street can get pretty sunny, as opposed to like some of the places on grand where you have shade from the buildings. So that's another way that makes it unique. Three, the variance requested results and benefits to the community. So having a nice shaded, attractive dining area provides a community benefit and also an economic benefit, as it allows the restaurant to probably use more seats. And this is where design variance gets a little different than a standard variance. With standard variance, we talk about hardship and reasonable use. And we do here too, but again, this being in section B, there's a little bit more flexibility. And so number four, if the variance is necessary and appropriate to make possible the reasonable use of the land, staff finds that no. Whether property has shaded umbrellas or retractable awning, it's not necessary and appropriate to make reasonable use. You know, you can still have an outdoor dining area whether you have shade or not, and that's reasonable, but having shade is definite benefit. But when it comes to being necessary and appropriate, staff found it wasn't. Number five, the variance is a minimum variance that will afford relief. So the variance is a minimum variance, applicant is proposing going up to the limits of outdoor dining area, not going any further. And so that's, staff's finding that's the minimum. And then the strict application of code standards would produce undue hardship. So again, going back to hardship being where you can't put the property to reasonable use, whether or not there's an awning here, they can still operate a dining area. It's still, they can still provide some shade with individual umbrellas. So it's, staff found it's not necessarily producing an undue hardship if this variance won't approve. But again, the way that design variance is written, four of the six, staff finds four of the six. So finding for approval of that first item to extend more than five feet. And so that's action item one. Action item two, and again, this is for using a non-canvas material, and applicant has more information. They'll probably elaborate on exactly what that material it is and how it compares to canvas, which is what code requires. So again, section A, staff finds it meets all three, whether that's a canvas or an alternative. It's not going to violate building code, doesn't harm the public, and it's, the intent is that awnings are constructed of a sturdy material. So whether that's canvas or maybe a synthetic alternative that would have a similar lifespan and longevity, that would be the intent. So three out of three for section A. And then with section B, should say section B, similarly, four out of the six. So again, it's a durable material, similar to canvas, so have the same being exceptional property, community benefits, you know, having a proposed material. It's canvas-like in appearance and performance, applicant's not going with something like a very non-durable plastic or something similar like that. And then again, four and six are similar to a lot, the rationing for previous one, in that it isn't not approving, would not produce undue hardship. But again, with the design variance, there's a little more flexibility for out of the six. So with action item two, staff also finds a recommendation for approval. Reviewing agency comments, and this is also included in the conditions of approval. Anytime someone constructs something that goes over the city right-of-way, that's permanent in nature, they do need a right-of-way encroachment license, and that would be reviewed and approved by city council. And so Planning and Zoning Commission were to approve the variance tonight, the applicant would then have to go to city council for their right-of-way encroachment license. And with that comes an indemnification agreement, and then also the insurance piece. But the applicant already holds insurance because they have outdoor dining, so they're already doing that. No public comments were submitted. These are the suggested conditions. One to call out is just number seven, in that the applicant only utilize the awning between the dates of April 1st and October 31st, just to avoid issues with snow. And so they could install the awning, it could be there, again, it is retractable, so the idea is that it would be retracted and not used between those states, just to avoid any issues with snow load. And again, so action item one, recommendation for approval. Action item two, recommendation for approval. And then again, just as a reminder, if Planning and Zoning Commission finds to recommend denial, you do have to have an alternative motion following the format here and also found in the staff report. So I will stop sharing my screen.
Okay, thank you, Emery. Okay, this will come back to the commission for questions for Emery regarding his report recommendations. Matthew?
Emery, why does the code limited to five feet? And why does the code specifically designate canvas as the material to be used?
So for the five feet, again, the idea is when you have like an individual building entrance, you want to have that kind of contained to the building and not going all the way out, you know, like a red carpet all the way to the street, and just kind of contained to being closer to the building. So that's the intent of the five feet. And then with the canvas, mostly just per durable materials. And again, like time, times change and technology is always getting better. So, you know, there's always alternatives, which is why we have a design variance process. But for picking canvas, canvas is generally durable.
Then for the lease that's done annually, I noticed on Seventh, well, the ones that have outdoor dining, they have barricades that are established. You have wrought iron or whatever, are those permanently affixed to the ground?
They are not supposed to be. They are supposed to be affixed so that they cannot move. Several of them have bolted into the decorative.
Well, I have noticed that. So what's the policing activity or the monitoring or whatever the right way to say it? To make sure that the people who are doing lease are adhering to the, the things that are appropriate? And I know that's kind of a little off.
At some point, those will need those bricks as they've been drilled and over time, and we get snow and ice and salt, they're going to need to be replaced. And those people that have drilled into it when they weren't supposed to, will have to pay for that. Yeah, I mean, I don't have much to add to that. You know, the city could go and enforce its leases as, you know, at its discretion if called upon, so. And I would add too, this is a general condition of a lot of the outdoor dining leases, a lot of them are added during COVID. And staff was not in-house, we worked remotely, and a lot of that was put together pretty quickly in interest of allowing businesses flexibility. So I would say that we're definitely improving kind of the outdoor dining program too, so. Good question.
You good?
Yeah.
Amy?
So do I save this for the applicant? I'm not sure, but like color, height, and then how far out from the building is it going to go?
Sure, I'll actually. It is for the distance, I'll have to log in just quick. And the applicant, I'm probably expand on the actual material, but I'll bring up the site plan here. It was nine, nine-two, correct? Yeah, so it'd be nine feet, two inches out from the building to match the outdoor dining area.
Does that, that extends past that wrought iron gate?
No, so it'd be.
Do it.
Yeah, I'll share my screen. Here, this is a good picture. So this point right here is nine feet, two inches from the building. And so that is how far the awning would extend.
And how high?
It's 10 feet, correct? So it was 10 to.
Right, then, that awning will have a pitch to it, but you have a regulation that it can't come any lower than eight feet. It'll probably be between nine and 10 feet at the front.
Yeah, so 10 feet above sidewalk, eight foot is minimum for code, and that's for pedestrian clearance.
And then color?
Oh, color, as proposed, and I think the applicant had a sample, it is a white and yellow subtle striped pattern.
If you can bring it up, she's here.
Um, why don't, why don't you hold, hold on that, hold on that?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just curious.
Do you have any more questions?
I'll wait for the applicant.
Okay, you shut off there.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Are there any other restaurants that have, or establishments that have asked for a variance like this? It seems pretty inconsistent with what currently exists.
Not yet. Part of the outdoor dining is they're not allowed to install poles or posts in the leased area. So really, the retractable awning would be the way that code requires that to be done.
Okay.
Or a lever, I mean, either or.
A follow-up question to that, so could this set a precedence for other establishments to come in and request the same relief?
Yeah, I could see that. If Juicy Lucy received approval for the variance, went through with the installation and had it another, especially on Seventh Street, when it gets pretty sunny and hot in the afternoons. Yeah, this could, and Seth thought about that too, is okay, well, if everyone had this and there's awnings all along that area, is that fine? And in my mind, it does create a, just a better, better customer area, better dining experience, just adds to the, to Seventh Street.
My concern is that obviously there was an intent not to have them, and maybe that was because there wasn't retractable awnings at the time. But it seems to me that, you know, umbrellas were chosen as an acceptable shade prevention for the area. And so I'm, I'm wondering, you know, we put a lot of energy towards preserving kind of a historical look downtown in our downtown core area. And did staff feel like this would detract from that feel at all? Because we have these big, beautiful historic buildings and.
This is a good question, and I think two parts of that is, one is code would allow the applicant to do a five-foot awning without this variance process. So they could just go ahead and do that as is.
Yeah.
So this is, again, a little, about as twice as far, but five feet is pretty far from a building in the first place. And then I guess the second piece is, well, another thing too, it's seasonal, so it's going to be retracted for, again, October through April. It's a good chunk of the year. And then two, awnings are historic, when you look at downtowns, awnings have been on buildings. And then there is, there is, you know, kind of going back to the question about will I canvas, and that also is part of it, like that's material that's been used for a very long time for buildings, for awnings. And then also too, that there is a part in the code that talks about solid colors or subtle striped patterns. So again, it is more simple of a look, of a final look on the building.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. So, so I know there's a greens, there's a green space, and it looks like there's no trees out there in the way, because it goes out to that distance. But if branches come over there, is there any issue with tree branches or anything in that, in that area? Because I know there's trees planted along that, along Seventh Street.
So as that tree grows, that is a good point. And to that point, these outdoor dining leases are renewed on an annual basis, which gives the city a great chance to look at is they are, is the person operating it the way they're supposed to? Are there any issues like the snow removal, you know, police presence, just anything in general? So that it gives a chance to city to reevaluate on a yearly basis how that outdoor dining lease is going. So I would imagine going forward, if Juicy Lucy still had that awning and that tree continued to grow, that could be something that could be addressed when they renew for their lease.
Well, you, I mean, I would assume that you'd have to, that they'd keep the awning and we'd cut the trees back. I mean, I, I know when I was at CMC, that's what we did for our signage there.
Yeah, I mean, I would need to look at the terms of the lease, and I you know, my sense is in a traditional lease arrangement, that would be an encouragement into the lease premises. They'd be able to, to turn it back. But as Emery noted, these are annually renewed, and it's something that could be discussed with any of the less fees in the future.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal, but something to consider, but.
Well, and two, it's, that is all city right-of-way. So when that lease is up for annual renewal, if the city felt that conditions in the lease needed to change, that would be part of the renewal. Like, here are the new conditions, here's the tree.
Okay, thanks. You need to hold on.
Will, will they do that?
You'll have a chance here in a second. Okay, and then another question I had is, so the retractable thing is seasonal. Could we also put in that it's based on hours of business, which I would think makes sense anyway? That you'd bring it in, you know, wouldn't open it till 10:30 or 11:00 or whatever it is in the morning and close it at 10 o'clock at night or?
I think that would be a reasonable condition if Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to add that. It's similar, we do similar for lighting and illumination for signs.
Okay, thanks, those are my two questions. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, thanks, Emery. Now the applicant?
I wanted one last note on the, if you were to add a condition on like closing time, the way that's worded for lighting is it picks, you know, 10:00 PM or one hour later than closing time, you know, one hour later than closing, whichever later, so something similar.
Could you kind of come up with some wording on that for, if you wanted to add that, so when it comes around to that? Okay, thanks. Okay, the applicant, step forward, please. And if you could give us your name and, and I'm assuming you're with the sign company, so, but who you represent?
If they ask, we can say.
My name is Rick Van Vliet, my company is Western Slow Awning.
Thanks. Welcome.
Yes, I'm ready.
So for, do, do you have any, any presentation that you want to do? Or, you know, a couple of ways you could do, you could do that, or the other, you heard some of our questions, you could just respond. I saw you raising your hand, so I know you've got some words to say.
For you.
Be good.
You know, basically, Emery had shown you the drawing that we're going to do. I would address a couple of the things that you had brought up. One of your concerns was the tree. We work obviously a lot around trees as well with these awnings. The, what's called the front bar, or where this comes out, the front bar on these is only about six inches. And then there's a valance that hangs down. So as that tree grows, and I understand you have to consider that, but it can be pit, we can pitch this to any height we need. So a lot of times what we're doing, if people don't want to trim back their trees, if we can get in between branches, we can actually make it go in between branches. So it's a small enough profile that it doesn't really affect that part for the most part. I can't say forever, I have had people trim trees for me too as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just going to address this. Um, and I was just going to address as far as the, the five foot and the window awnings and the, the door awnings. I'm not sure how long ago that was done, but I have a feeling it's a pretty dated policy. Um, and that's kind of what people were doing, and I understand the historic part of it, but, you know, it was mainly to kind of keep the rain off people as they're going in, maybe, and all of that. Um, these won't detract from that at all. In fact, I think these will. I'm an awning guy, so yeah, they're going to improve the look, I guarantee it. I, I don't believe they would detract from that. Um, I would also address your concern about having it open. I would recommend that you make that a part of the agreement, that when they're not open, those awnings are closed. Um, that's the problem with some of the kites and things that you see down there are sails. They're out all, all night. And sooner or later, enough of those winds could hit that they're going to weaken those structures and those things are going to come snapping out. So, you know, I think it's a good idea to only have it open during the, you know, and, and with on those as well, we do wind sensors, which these other things don't have. So if the winds get too hard, they'll actually retract. So, you know, so they might, if you're there eating and it retracts in a rainstorm, just know that I'm just trying to do the best I can for you. I, I guess that would be all that I had and I didn't.
You could show the color.
Okay.
Color sample too would be.
Very curious. And then can you tell us a little bit about the material?
Yeah, this is a sun umbrella, this is what they.
Does this have to be on the microphone?
No, you, yeah, what, what, let's just, so everyone can see this.
Okay.
I'm okay too.
Okay. It's this, it's the bright yellow?
Yeah, yellow stripe with white stripe. It's called a cabana.
Cabana. Love it.
It's a, it's a great out, outdoor color. I, I love this color. Actually, I, I have some homeowners that have bought this color that I was glad they did. So, um, you know, I, you know, dressing that, and this is a sun umbrella fabric. Some, some umbrella fabric is a world renowned outdoor fabric. Um, probably a lot of you have it in your furniture outside. It, it resists fading. Um, it's an acrylic fabric. So that, one of the big differences between your canvas and your acrylic fabrics is these acrylic fabrics actually filter UV rays. Um, we're actually recommended by the Cancer Society of America because by filtering UV, keeps all that off you, but it also cools the, cools where you're sitting. So that's an advantage over the canvas. These will generally last longer than the canvas, especially with our Colorado sun, tends to bake canvas and causes it to tear. Um, we're probably replacing sun umbrella fabric somewhere between fifteen and twenty years. Um, I just recently replaced a sun umbrella fabric that was forty years old. They use it all the time. I can't explain how that one went forty years, but it's possible. So, um, it's a great fabric.
Okay, thank you very much.
A little bit lighter than canvas too, which is nice on these awnings, because there's not a lot of extra weight.
Thank you. Any other thing you want to present to us, or should we move on to questions for you?
Um, I think I presented everything I needed. As I said, these awnings are adjustable. So we can adjust pitch on it. We, we would never come below where it needed, you know, your, I think your regulation is nine feet. We can pitch it at ten or nine, nine to ten feet, but we, we would never be below that. It's definitely adjusted.
Okay, thank you. Amy?
Oh.
No, you, no questions? Okay. Matthew?
Uh, can you talk about, can you talk about the mounting hardware, where you're going to place it? Because I'm looking at this picture, we have on one part of the building, the twenty foot length has got extended windows. Where are you going to mount that? These aren't, obviously aren't going to be symmetrical all the way across the face.
Actually, they will be, um, you have that, there's a picture in here that I'll bring you.
It's a sight photo one, probably.
Okay, so what we'll be doing, the, the, to the right, that's where the twenty footer will go.
Yeah.
And then, then they have their doorway and that, there is a little bump out there. We won't be covering the doorway. We'll be to the left of that, and that'll be a thirteen foot awning.
Right.
So we'll be taking care of, which works great because they're not seated in front of that walkway anyway. Um, we actually will be mounting through the brick.
Okay.
We have, we have, uh, um, mason green lags. They're very nice. They go through the brick, they grab the sheathing behind. It's actually one of our strongest mounts. Um, we have tested the brick to make sure it'll hold and it will.
Okay, and it's, so it's going to be symmetrical all the way across the entire facade?
Right, it'll be a straight line, so one won't be higher than the other. Yes.
Um, there's not going to be any, it's going to be below the existing sign that's there then?
The, where we're looking at mounting is in the, you'll see the, the lighter browns and the darker browns right in between that patterned.
Okay.
And that lighter brown, right, right in there is where we're looking at mounting straight across. So we would be a little bit above the gray, the gray on the other side.
So the pattern's not going to be obstruct, the pattern of the building won't be obstructed at all?
Correct.
Okay, as long as aesthetically, it's going to, we'll still be able to see that.
Right, and, and there, there, we're going to go with a bronze frame on there, so it'll blend with the, with the brick as well.
Good.
You good, Mike?
Yeah.
You, you're talking about the big Juicy Lucy sign, correct? There's a little sign out front. You'll see a little, um.
A little hanging sign.
That little hanging sign, that's going to be, okay, correct. But they will have to move the little hanging, yeah.
They're going to have to move that sign?
The little hanging one?
Uh huh.
It'll have to move that, I think they're going to move it more towards the door. Because if we go above that, then we might get into that pattern.
Okay.
We're, that, that's the nice thing about these, we're very flexible how we can hang. We can put it anywhere. Um, you know, as long as we have a flat surface. So that, that's pretty flexible.
Carolyn?
Um, I'm also, I'm similarly concerned about the historic facade of the building and impacting it with the awnings. And I'm not sure I'm quite clear on where you said that these were being installed. I mean, I was sort of searching for a horizontal line that went across both buildings. And to me, the wider section, I see the molyon between the transom and the big storefront windows lines up with the sort of, gray brick on the left. Is that too low to mount these to keep them above the minimum height? Because that would be a continuous line and not impact the patterned brick above.
Correct, we won't, we won't have to go over that. We're, the awnings, it's, the awning itself will be mounted somewhere between eleven and twelve feet on the wall. Which puts us right, right into this area here.
Yeah, but then on the left side, that's cutting right through that gray.
It, no, we'll be above that.
Oh, so they're going to be stepped, yeah.
No, that, the, the gray and the brown kind of line up there. They might be off by a little bit, but that's why we're going at a different height. We'll probably be right at the bottom. You know, right at the top of that gray there.
But that's the adjacent building.
No, no, that's still Juicy Lucy.
Okay, so the, the small sort of black and gray looking patterned bit, that doesn't get any awning. So the section to the left where your cursor is, is where the awning is.
There's two.
The shorter one.
Two awnings.
Okay.
There's a thirteen footer over here.
Okay.
And then straight across, and we'll, you know, we're going to put a level on it, of course.
Yep.
So it'll be somewhere in the middle here.
I get it.
Will be a twenty foot awning.
Okay.
That center section is the doorway.
Okay.
And there's the brick.
About seven or eight feet wide where there's.
Yeah, and the brick comes out, I think, eight, nine or ten inches. So we, you know, we would have liked to have covered that probably, just maybe for the waitstaff if anything, but.
So when, uh, when the awning is retracted, what does the piece that's attached to the building look like? And does the valance still hang down?
The valance will be shown. The reason for the valance that I tell all of my customers, that valance really serves no purpose except for the public. If somebody's walking by, they're going to see a valance instead of the arms that are, because the arms fold in.
This one.
They scissor.
Okay, yeah.
And I can show you pictures of anything that you want to see.
Okay.
That, so that balance mainly is hiding it from the public. They won't see that mechanism. The actual profile of it is about ten inches.
Okay. And it can be manually retracted? There's like a button inside?
It comes with a manual override. What we tell our customers, it is a motorized, so use the motor.
Yeah.
Um, because a lot of times if they, we had a customer one time, they decided to, they wanted the cardio. Buy an awning if you want good cardio from your arms.
Yeah.
But they, they have rolled it out and sometimes it sets the limits. It'll, it'll blow out the limits.
Oh.
So it's not a problem for us to go back and reprogram. But because it's a motor, we say, you know, you've got a motor, use it.
Sure, yeah. But in case of power outage.
If there's a power outage, you can still get it in, right?
Okay.
They're going to want a young person to do it.
Yeah. All right, I think that covers it for me. Thank you.
True.
Any other questions? Any other comments you have?
Um, well, my wife was bringing a bracket, so you can see, this is the actual bracket for where we hang. And I can bring it for you to look and the awning sits within it.
Do people need to see that? Are you good? Yeah, I think we're okay.
It just kind of.
Thank you. No, that's a good.
Profile it'll have up there.
Yeah, that's a good thing to see. Thank you. Thank you.
That's the bronze.
That's the bronze, yes. It'll go, it goes well with the brick.
Sweet. Okay, um, anything else you have? Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, okay, any, is anyone from the public online? I don't see anyone in the, in our, in our crowd here. I'm assuming no one's online. Other than Hannah. Hello, Hannah. Um, okay, I'll close the, um, the public questioning part. And now we'll bring it back to the, to the commission for, comments, questions, possibly motion. Amy?
Shall we do these into action item one and action item two?
Yeah, there's two, two variants. I think that makes sense.
Okay, so for the first action item, I make a motion to approve the design variance request. Uh, with staff recommendations, approval, seven through nine with the addition of the, um, business operating hours. Yes.
So also I thought of another thing when they mentioned sign. Um, so this is just a thought. Uh, no permanent or temporary signage shall be attached to the retractable awning. To just, since it is a retractable thing, just making that clear. Um, so I have two. So this is similar to the lighting one. Awakening shall be retracted no later than ten PM or one hour after the close of business, whichever is later. Um, awning shall be extended only during hours of business. Two options.
So with the addition of awning shall never be extended.
Or you can just go with what Emery.
Yeah, with what Emery said. For one hour later. And then as well as nothing should be hanging from the awning signage, uh, things like that. Okay.
Math- Matthew?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we had a motion by Amy and a second by Matthew. Um, any discussion? Commissioner White?
I'll probably be unpopular in this opinion, but I think that, uh, section B three is not met. Um, for me, I think that what is going to happen is we may have, um, more businesses asking for awnings and in my opinion, that does not benefit the community. Um, it benefits the businesses and in my opinion, doesn't benefit the aesthetics of the downtown core.
Okay, thank you, Joy. Carolyn?
As always, I respect Joy's opinion. However, uh, I will say that awnings, um, have been in place in our historic downtown since our historic downtown was constructed. Um, the use of the canvas is, uh, is appropriate. I believe that the stripes are historical, historically accurate and appropriate. And I think that the installation of awnings will somewhat mitigate the visual clutter created by the umbrellas. In addition, having personally eaten under the umbrellas, the sun moves, the umbrella doesn't. People are scooting the chairs around, trying to wiggle the umbrellas, hitting other customers. And I think the awnings will probably add to the general safety and character of the Seventh Street historic area.
Thank you.
And I also respect Commissioner White, but I agree with Commissioner Sipperly. Uh, it doesn't happen often, but, uh, when I first moved here a long time ago, um, it was nineteen eighty-seven. And, uh, Grand Avenue had a lot more awnings on. And I think with the new material, because I do remember some of the old canvas awnings on the, um, on Grand Avenue, were torn. I remember walking down Grand Avenue, um, those many years ago. Yes, I was probably at Doc Holidays. But yes, I do recall those. But, um, I agree with you, Carolyn, that one. I'm sorry, Joy.
Except for you didn't like the awnings before, or you just thought they were historical? Sorry. Were you saying that there were more awnings and you didn't like them before, or they were just more historical? Like they were there previously?
They were there previously. Yeah. I'll s- say it into the microphone. They were there previously. And so, um, it definitely gave it more of like this old timey feel. And so that was my impression way back then. And I do appreciate that they're using a new material because it will be less, um, you know, it won't fade as much. It won't, um, dry out as much, you know, with the canvas material and stuff. And I do like the color that they're choosing. I think it's going to add some nice flair, which will give it an even better appeal to that, just that whole area that we spent so much time, energy and effort, um, really recreating. When they took the bridge down and put up the pedestrian bridge.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? John?
I guess I had a, a question for staff, um, that I should have asked earlier, but didn't. Um, is the right of way encroachment license revocable? What are the conditions of that?
Yeah, they're generally revocable for any reason if the city needs to use its right of way or any violation of, of the license agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, and my question kind of follows up on that is, is that, um, sounds like the lease is an annual renewal, right? So, so I'm assuming that, you know, if, if it gets wonky or something from the wind, or if it's, if it's not aesthetically pleasing after it comes up, that, that in that, at least in that annual inspection, um, that that will be done, that, that, uh, that, that, that staff, city, whomever that person is, could, could say, you know, this needs to be remedied and taken care of. That's one. And then the other is if, if the trees are in there, which, you know, I don't, I don't have that much concern about it. But I just want to make sure every year that, that, that we look at what we're putting in there is, is aesthetically done. And I don't know if that needs to be added as a condition or if that's automatically done anyway. But I think that's, that, that's a critical thing. I mean, it kind of gets to the point of, of the fences being attached permanently. You know, if we just put it in there and then we blow it off, then we, then we have something that's not a, a positive thing for our community for the long term. And I'm kind of throwing that at you, Emery. So if you want to stand up and talk at that.
That was a question or statement. Um, yeah, so they are, and I also forgot to add, the reason all the outdoor dining leases are actually have different expiration dates that are actually typed also to their liquor licenses. So for example, it has to do with state law in your area. So again, that's part of it too. When they want to renew a liquor license, we also look at their outdoor dining license. So, um, all those things could be looked at each year.
So, so we would need to add that as a condition because that's automatically part of, of the license renewal.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very conditional. It's, I mean, it's, they're on a yearly basis. Um, there's even in the lease, there's, I'm sure to forget the time length, but basically if the city were to change something in the lease, there is a period of notice to give to the leasing. Um, but again, yes, the year, annual inspection, yeah, that would be done.
But isn't the variance separate?
Joy, 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 joy.
Isn't, isn't the variance separate from, from the lease? They're two different items, right?
Well, they, they're separate, but the, you know, the lease can be not renewed for any, any reason, including a violation of the variance, violation of the, of the land use code. And, um, going to the liquor license issue, the, the liquor licensing official does do a full review and sends these applications, the liquor license renewals around. for everybody to review, and so they will oftentimes take a look at any of these other issues that may have arisen over the past year. And to add, that's also why there's a condition specifically tied to this variance for the insurance, because like hypothetically, let's say Juicy Lucy does not do outdoor seating anymore. Maybe they don't have the staff, maybe they don't want to do it, but they like their awning and want to keep it. This condition of this variance ties that insurance policy, so they're required to do that, which again is also required for right-of-way encroachment license too, so multiple ways that's going to be required.
So, so, so this variance is tied into RMCO Restaurant Group LLC, right? I mean, the, the awning company is just, they're just the applicant. So as far as owning up to that, I mean, they're just doing a great job installing it, giving them a great product, but if you don't take care of it and do that sort of thing, then the owner could have it yanked. Is, I mean, I just want to make sure that's clear, that we don't need to put that as a condition, that that's already there inherent in the lease.
I think it is, but, you know, there's, if it's something the commission would like to ensure gets followed up on, I, I could see having a condition in there being helpful, just that if it falls in, you're saying if it falls into disrepair, isn't made, and
Exactly.
that the city could order it to be removed or
Correct.
fixed, I guess fixed or removed. Yeah, I mean, I, I would need to take a look at the lease, but we'd probably have that authority, given it's city right-of-way and, you know, at least through non-renewal. But having, having extra authority never hurt anybody.
Yeah.
And I think the other layer too, which about the right-of-way encroachment license being revocable is if that gets revoked, whether or not a variance was approved, you can't have something out there because you have to have the right-of-way encroachment license too. So that would probably be, Richard, that makes sense? Yeah, I mean, if we revoked the license, yeah, they would have to remove it. So it's, it's up to the commission. I don't think, I don't think it hurts to add it as a condition. And it would be worth to add also, I mean, planning and zoning is reviewing this for its design aspects. City council would act, actually also needs to agree that this is appropriate for that space and that they would issue the right-of-way encroachment license too. So this is step one, really.
So I thought, I thought we're the deciding body, though.
On the variance. On the design aspect of the fact that, so here's an example, let's say Juicy Lucy wanted to just do a five-foot canvas awning. We wouldn't be here tonight.
Right.
And the applicant would proceed straight to city council.
Okay, so I know Carolyn's on here, but are, are people, should we add this? Is that what you're kind of to talk about?
I have a slightly separate question.
Okay, so do we want to kind of close on this one? Is this? We want to, so I'll make I'll leave it to you. Commissioner?
Okay, can I do it, Richard, prior to Carolyn asking her question?
Yeah, I think we could close out any, you know, if you're offering a friendly amendment, if Chair, Chair Waller is offering a friendly amendment.
So I'm going to agree with Chair Waller and his friendly amendment that one of the other conditions, so this would be condition 11, that they, or no, this would be condition 12, because we added two, other than the nine. And that if the awning is ever in, you know, non-working order, it's in disarray, it's not, you know, that
You have the wording for it, Emery?
Emery?
So I think what we decided was awning shall be retracted no later than 10:00 PM or one hour after the close of business, whichever is later.
Yep, got that. And then also, and one other amendment would be, or condition, excuse me, would be to, if the awning was ever left in disarray or not in compliance, that the city
Maybe it, it shall be repaired within 30 days upon notice by the city.
It shall be repaired on 30 days. On notice from the city. What Richard said. Okay, do you have that, Emery?
And then just to confirm, was that also including the no permanent or temporary signage shall be attached?
So that
That's the third one.
So there was three extra. Making it 12.
Yeah, do we have a second on that?
I'll second the additional amendments and to the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And to my additional question.
Carolyn, mic up.
Okay. So it's a, an encroachment license that goes with the awning, and licenses can be revocable. Will the awning in its full variance and permission go if Juicy Lucy's is sold to a new owner? Or will they have to come back, apply for a new variance? And will, and obviously it would be a separate agreement with the city for leasing that property. But what about the awning?
Well, so variances run with properties, so variance would go forward.
Okay.
That new owner would need to negotiate, if they wanted to continue the outdoor dining lease, they would need to negotiate a new lease, which has actually happened for Juicy Lucy. RMCO is not the person that started this outdoor dining lease in 2014. So the design variance continues with the property, outdoor dining lease negotiates a new lease, and then right-of-way encroachment license, I'm actually not sure. Our form right-of-way encroachment, I believe it would travel with, I, I think it travels with the property. But again, it's revocable pretty much for any reason.
The new owner would have to reapply annually?
For the, for the lease.
Yeah.
But not for the right-of-way license.
And say that the new owner decided to do away with outdoor dining, could the awning remain in its retracted position, or would everything need to be removed and repaired? If there was no dining, we can't really justify having an awning per staff's findings.
That is correct. I mean, the awning is not necessarily, if Juicy Lucy did not want to do outdoor dining anymore and this variance still stayed true, they would be able to use an awning. Now, practicality, I don't know why they would, but they would be able to do that, yes.
Like if it turned into a retail store?
Correct.
Our applicant does have a question, but I think we don't, we can't, can we, they just heard their comments?
I'll leave it to the discretion of the chair.
Okay, we're a small little family here. Yes. Yeah, what, yes, please approach and, so we can get you on the microphone. Thank you very much.
I was just going to address that, these awnings are fully programmable. So I mean, technically, if they did away with their outdoor dining, I could go back in and program that to where it only came out five feet.
Okay. All right, that, that covers that for me.
Yes, Commissioner White?
Can we make it a condition that they open their rooftop dining?
I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
Okay. Emery, do you have something to say?
Oh, I was just gonna share the screen for right-of-way encroachment license, so the commission could see some of the language about revoking that. We've talked about some of that items. So basically, if they don't hear some, you know, teeth failure to provide the policy, so insurance policy will nullify the license to encroach without necessity of further notice and shall require the applicant to remove the encroachment at the applicant's sole expense. So if they don't want to insure it anymore, it comes off the building. So that's an example, and that's with the right-of-way encroachment license.
Thank you, Emery.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for staff? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Just one.
This is only on action one.
The motion passes six one with Commissioner White descending.
Okay, thank you very much.
But I respect you guys, for sure.
Okay, let's move on to action two.
Let somebody else do it.
Chair Waller, I can control the, would you like me to do the mics?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
It's good, it's a mental.
Bring them on as they come, come up.
I move to approve action item two of item 1724 with the findings and recommendations on page seven and nine of the staff report and the additional three conditions imposed in action item one.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Okay, let's call it, call the vote.
The motion passes six one with Commissioner White descending. Voting no.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, the applicant.
Contrarian.
Emery, thank you very much. You did, did a nice job.
Thank you.
All the best.
Very Parisian, very Parisian.
I love the yellow.
Okay. Now we move on to planning and zoning commission training. By Richard.
Yeah, they're in big trouble.
Hey, there, there's been a request to take a five-minute biological break. Okay? Okay, we'll be back at 7:05. The order, Richard will give us the planning and zoning commission training.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen, which is a, do you all see it? A fairly simple, I don't know if there's a way to go full screen, but you guys can see it well enough, right?
Yep.
All right. This is a fairly, great. Don't need your reading glasses. This is a pretty simple overview of kind of planning commission's authority, process, and legal kind of considerations when we review, when we have meetings, reviewing your packet beforehand and making decisions. I am happy to be interrupted throughout this because I think that's a better way to learn and bring up things that are of interest to you, because I don't know what questions you have, and I'm hoping to address them as we move along. You know, Glenwood Springs is a home rule municipality, so is governed by Title 31 in the Colorado revised statutes, which includes a lot of material about planning and zoning, as do Title 29 and Title 24. But since the city is home rule, it can kind of do what it feels like with a lot of these things, and it has over time. You know, the planning and zoning authority is generally police power to protect health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city. But, and in the statute, for statutory towns and cities, basically everything goes to city council. But in larger cities, obviously, there's a lot of matters that are handled by, by the planning commission and stop at the planning commission and are only appealable to city council. So that's why, that's why it happened here, the Um, so that why, that's why it happened here, the kind of the, the only authorities in state law that you guys have are preparing a master plan, which um, just for, for the record, is where this whole three mile plan for annexation comes from. It's a requirement in state law that, uh, the city look at the surrounding three miles around its boundary and consider what areas are desirable for annexation and inclusion and corporate limits. And then the other other, you know, mandates to planning commission is to recommend zoning uh, of the municipality and, uh, to recommend subdivision regulations. And so, under state law, you're only a recommending body, um, but in practice in the city of Glenwood Springs, um, you are the final stop for a lot of, uh, land use applications. The uh, Land Use Control Act has a number of, these are kind of where the police powers live, uh, for land use decisions and zoning authority. Um, I won't go through all this, but these are kind of considerations, uh, with any land use decision that comes, um, comes before you. The.
Um, I, I've, I have a question on, on this one, and it's maybe towards Hannah. Say she, she's still up there, but, but you know, I mean, I, these are all great, you know, A through H. I'm on the previous slide. So, um, I'm assuming that, 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 that that's all, you know, that's all in staff's checklist for every new project that they do that, because you know, there's no way in heck I'm gonna remember all of these, I know Carolyn's gonna remember historical and archaeological part, but, but, um, because the, I mean, these are all marvelous things, and I know that's probably.
These, these have been incorporated into, into the land use code.
So it's all part of like their checklist for everything that we see here.
Right, not the specific provisions, um, but this is, these are kind of the, the authorities in state law that get brought into the land use code. For you all to apply and for staff to apply.
Cool.
And in, in the developing, uh, the code itself.
Okay, thanks.
The charter doesn't have a specific provision about, uh, the establishment of a planning commission, um, which is different than some other home rule charters, uh, but it does live in the code in Title O two O. And here is where, you know, the, a lot of the, the delegation of authority of the planning commission occurs, that you'll review proposals for subdivisions. Your appellate body from staff decisions. And uh, recommend ordinances to, to city council as it relate to Title O seven O.
So, and I, I have a question on this slide too, is so, where it says that we serve as the building board of appeals, is it, does, and I know, I think the county has a board of appeals, but do it, does Glenwood? City Glenwood?
Yes, um, and Hannah might know more about it, I do remember this coming up a few years ago, that making sure that we actually had one constituted, I just don't think it has been utilized. Hannah, do you, if you're on?
I am. Yeah, I believe the building board of appeals is actually planning and zoning commission.
Oh. There you go.
I have a question.
Put that on my resume.
So my question is on, like, if we say were to make, wanted to make a recommendation to change the code, i.e., let's say we no longer want to see canvas in the code. I know this seems to sound stupid, but, but it's just an example, and we just really want to see like different, more innovative materials, like is that, how do we do that?
Hannah, do you, now, I know for city council, there's a process, do we have a process for planning commission to initiate a text amendment? That's kind of, that's what it would be considered in the code, be initiating the text amendment. There's, I think we have an application where the public can do that, do you know, Hannah, if the planning commission has that authority in our code?
They do have that authority, we've done that in a variety of ways, usually a little less formal, uh, but it's something that gets directed to staff uh, with whatever the topic area is, staff does an analysis and sometimes refers to city council to see if they are open to that. And then we bring it back with a full staff report and analysis to planning and zoning commission. This also used to happen, uh, with work sessions that we held with P and Z, and I know planning commission has talked about bringing some of those back in our less busy months. Um, so we can certainly look at that, but it is, it is, uh, recommending something and um, having it come with the majority vote from planning and zoning commission for staff to look into whatever the topic is.
Eric?
Hey.
Let's leave it on or no?
I'm kidding.
And I mentioned that there's nothing in the charter about existence of the planning commission, but, um, we have a new provision in the charter, um, regulating growth, um, or at least not regulating growth, but, um, I guess.
It's a slippage.
Keeping, uh, kind of kicking back up, uh, certain applications to city council, um, and then also referring, uh, annexations out to a vote. For any, any annexation and any any residential projects that need a certain threshold. Title O seven O.
Hold on a sec, Richard, one second. When you ref, when you talked about, um, planning and zoning, reviewing the three mile border of the city and considering it for annexation, is it generally, um, perceived that being annexed is a benefit to those residents, and is that why we um, review it, or is it a city benefit that we would want to annex those properties in? Or is it a combo?
I think it's, it's a, it's a mix of both, um, you know, the the kind of the way the annexation statute works is that cities, you know, it, it's, it's kind of pro, it is pro-growth of the municipal boundary, um, to force density within municipal limits. And, and that's why, like municipalities can annex without the counties have, really having any say on it. And so, you know, the benefits that you see for the municipality is hooking people up to your, to your utilities. And then, uh, and, and getting some of those fees from that development into the municipality for, uh, construction of roads, maintenance of other utilities, and then the, uh, the benefits to the property owners, uh, within that area is that they're subject to municipal zoning regulations, which tend to allow more density, um, being within a municipality instead of.
It does the, does the city identify certain areas where maybe there's like businesses that are annexed in but are not being utilized or paying appropriate taxes, and do they consider indemnification then also, or how does that work?
You mean condemnation?
Condemnation, sorry.
I mean, there's different mechanisms in state law.
Yeah.
Like urban renewal authorities, for example, that have that, that authority for redevelopment. It's a specific type of condemnation authority. I think that's more what you're talking about, where if there's, if there's a parcel that's considered blighted under the urban renewal statute, then, and oftentimes, you know, the municipalities create URAs to, to accomplish those purposes.
What is UR?
Urban renewal authority.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you.
Hannah, did you have anything to add on that?
Nope, you nailed it.
Alright, thanks. So Title O seven O, um, is what's known as the Unified Development Code. It has both land use and subdivision uh, regulations in it, there's, there are many codes that have, um, land use decisions and subdivision as separate, um, chapters within their codes. I think this allows kind of subdivision and those land use decisions to travel together more easily through a unified and more streamlined process. I'm not gonna go through each chapter of this, um, I think you all are pretty familiar with it. You know, a lot of the, the meat of this lives in, uh, use regulations and development standards. You know, zone districts are kind of, as everybody knows, they're mixed use, residential, commercial, kind of general categories. Use regulations are the specific types of uses that are allowed within those zone districts, either used by right, not allowed, um, special use permit, which I, I think is the same, Hannah, correct me if I'm wrong, special use permit is what we call, what would be a conditional use permit in other other jurisdictions.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so if you hear, if you hear the term conditional use permit and special use permit, those are kind of interchangeable.
Always wanted with them. He loves you.
And then, um, you know, development standards is really where the meat and potatoes lives for each, each type of land use application, uh, and subdivision application that might come through from dimensional standards, the design standards, um, everything else, so there's a lot in, in that section. And then administration procedures, I know is an area that Hannah spent, spends a lot of time, um, in determining what process any specific application is gonna go through. Title O six O is the building code, um, there's a probably ten or twelve different building codes that the city's adopted, um, not really planning mission jurisdiction unless it's sitting as the Board of Building Appeals. But, you know, you do have to be in compliance with Title O seven O in order to pull a building permit under O six O, and then we have a building department staff that is part of ComDev that administers that part of the code. So, any questions just on legal authority? Of planning commission and city council? Alright, so, um, I think the, the most important piece to take away from this is, and, and this is something that I invite questions on with any spec, any agenda item that, um, planning commission has, is legislative versus quasi judicial acts. The, the, the most important thing for me as the city attorney is legislative acts cannot be appealed to court, quasi judicial acts can't. And so, that is, when you're approaching them, um, there's kind of a different set of rules and standards for, uh, how you deal with, with each of these types of decisions. Legislative acts is your typical ordinance, a text amendment to the code, um, where it's generally applicable. You know, it, it doesn't affect just individual property owners', uh, rights. Um, so code amendments, I have it in a different slide, I'll run down to. Code amendments, the master plan. And annex, eh, annexations, um, and then zoning, like rezoning of a larger area neighborhood are considered legislative, and in, in legislative processes, you can really take any consideration into account, um, as long as you're not in violation of the, um, conflicts of interest code. And, you know, you guys can talk outside of hearings, you can talk to the public about it. You know, don't solicit bribes or take bribes for your vote, obviously, but, you know, it is, it is, it is much more of a, uh, a freewheeling, uh, process for how you, you know, make the sausage through legislative process. That said, you know, they are, we still have to conform with the hearing process that's in the, um, there, that the city has adopted, it'd be believed by resolution. Take public hearing, or take public comment, um, during consideration of a legislative act, um, and I think it's still good to have a, um, have a debate and have a record of the decision, um, it's just that record is not going to end up, typically is not going to end up in front of a court. So then, in contrast, uh, quasi judicial acts are, um, your typical land use application. Other examples are liquor licenses. The variance that we heard tonight is a quasi judicial act, and in those cases, you're sitting, uh, as a judge and really should only be considering the facts, uh, and the testimony that are presented in the hearing, in your packet, um, and then applying those facts to the code, um, that is always helpfully outlined, uh, by staff in your packet and described in the hearing. And that's why find, we, you know, we always include findings in the packet materials, so that if this does end up in court, then you know, there, there are those findings there in the record justifying, uh, the decision that was made. Um, and it's one of those areas, you know, if, uh, if we have to work on doing an alternative motion or adding conditions, we're here to help, uh, with those findings to make sure that we are justifying, uh, the decision that's being made.
So I, I, I have a question, so did, let's say I said something that I should not have said as a quasi judge. I'm assuming that, that, uh, because I'm here as part of city Glenwood Springs or whatnot, I'm not personally liable or whatever sort of thing that that goes to court, you know, for whatever reason sort of thing, is that?
Yeah, no, you, you are, as a, you know, elected or appointed official, you're not going to have personal liability, I mean, there's always defamation laws out there, um, you know, rarely does anybody succeed. It has to be a pretty egregious, um, type of statement to be found liable for something like defamation. But it, you know, it does, it's case specific, it depends on, on what somebody says. That answer your question?
So, I thought a really good, um, just kind of clear example of the two things was when I asked you if we could talk about the, um, the recent, what was it, it was a ballot, ballot, yeah, referendum, and you said, yes, we, I could engage in conversation in a public forum about that because it was legislative versus these, um, quasi judicial hearings that we have.
Yeah, and that's, um, that, that is oftentimes where, you know, we end up feeling questions from you all and from city council is like, alright, there's this community meeting happening about the, about an application. We generally advise you not to attend those community meetings because those are not gonna be part of the record. And, you know, if you do go to the meeting, then you are receiving different information than the other six members of the body are. And that's an important part of the decision, the decision-making process is ensuring that all seven judges have the same, uh, same information in front of them. And so, you know, there, if you have a conversation outside of the hearing and then realize, oh my goodness, that was for a pending land use application that I'm hearing in, in a few weeks, there's a couple of things you can do, you can, uh, disclose it and recuse yourself. Or disclose it and say, here's the conversation that I had, put it on the record, um, I'm providing it as public comment, basically. And, you know, making that effort, uh, can go a long ways in terms of curing a violation of a, you know, the quasi judicial process, like it's not a, it, we like to say it's a strict, you know, a bright line, um, and we don't want you all to go out there and say, I'll just fix this later. Um, but there are, you know, there are ways, and it is putting, putting those things on the record um, is the best way to, to kind of do that, and even if we have a continued hearing and you've missed the first part of the hearing, assuming we have a good, a good video recording of it, um, you can go back and watch the, the video recording and say, I believe I have heard all the testimony that was presented at the first part of this hearing, I can render a fair, uh, judgment on the matter. Zoning is one of the things where, you know, I mentioned it is generally considered legislative. Spot zoning, um, can be considered quasi judicial as well, which would just be the rezoning of one parcel, because that is affecting just the Spot zoning, um, can be considered quasi judicial as well, which would just be the rezoning of one parcel because that is affecting just the the rights of that individual property owner. Um, and so that's one where, you know, you kind of just have an asterisk there. Um, if there is a spot zoning coming in, oftentimes those spot zonings are coming in with a land use application. Um, and so we will just consider that entire hearing, uh, quasi judicial, but I think the general rules is like for quasi judicial, uh, and you can tell us, that's the thing that I'm emphasizing here is just, don't talk to people about it. Uh, don't do your own research. I know it's really tempting, but don't go visit the site because you're gonna, you're gonna see things differently. If you really, really want a site visit. I, I mean, obviously you might drive by stuff, um, but, uh, if you really want a site visit, we can, you can work with staff, um, don't abuse that obviously, but, um, work with staff to have a site visit. We would just go out and look at it. We wouldn't talk about anything because we want to make sure the public would, uh, have the opportunity to observe any comments that are made. And yeah, I think that's, that's it for quasi judicial and legislative acts, which I think is kind of the piece I'm trying to emphasize, um, in this training. So any questions about that?
I guess I had a question. Maybe it's a little bit of a tangent. Are we the deciding body for any site specific development plans?
Like a P U D, hmm, I, Hannah, that might be a question for you.
Yeah, I'm thinking through, um, our most recent changes.
Yeah.
And I
I think P U D is
There are some on the, on the commercial.
Yeah.
Official side, no longer on the residential side, but there are, um, some minor minor site architectural that you will have approval over if it's in the commercial side.
And is it a three year vesting period in the city?
Yes.
Yeah, under, under stay alive, yeah.
So I guess that goes back to you, you were talking about rules of general or generally applicable rules. I guess is the entire development code generally applicable?
The code itself is yes. So any amendment, any amendment to the code is of, i- is considered legislative because it is generally applicable. Um, the application of the code is, uh, specific generally, it, it, I won't say generally. The application of the code is specific to individual properties. Does that make sense? And that's why they're appeal, even, even, you know, Hannah's decisions are appealable to the planning commission. Because those rights are vesting at that time, um, where the, where the planning director has made a decision. Um, same way that planning commission decisions are appealable to city council, uh, because if the decision and not a recommendation, then the rights are, as you noted with a site specific development plan, which it, it's a term that's kind of, it's defined in state law and it has certain, certain legal ramifications, but the idea is that your, your rights vest in a development plan, um, at that time. That is appealable to city council and then only after, generally only after city council is it appealable to court.
Yeah.
I'm happy to answer if, if you have more questions on that.
Out of our scope.
Okay. So I think I went through all of these. But, yeah, try to keep your try to keep your self, uh, within the, within the kind of the four corners of the hearing and the packet that are provided to you. I think I'm going to jump to conflicts of interest because that
So, so, uh, Richard, one question I have is, it's just, I think it's very clear, but I just want to you know, just, just ask it. So, so if, if, you know, let's say we have, um, we get a 5,000 page package or something and we're reading through it and we're going go on and, and so, so it's, it, it's okay for us to talk to one, one person, one other commissioner, but you can't talk to three. I mean, if, if it's three, it's deemed as a, as a meeting, but if it's, let's see, I have a question.
Correct, but not, um, not if it's a quasi judicial matter.
Not if it's quasi judicial.
Yep.
So if it's quasi judicial, if it's an application that's coming here, then
Don't talk to
Don't talk to anybody at all.
Because we want all the commissioners to have the same experience with the hearing record.
Okay.
So any conversation outside of that would be ex parte would be outside of the hearing process. But I, I, I'll get to open meetings in a second. Um, I'll just, I'll do conflicts of interest uh, quickly because it does relate to quasi judicial.
Can we complain about old files? Like old hearings that are, it's done, but we didn't agree with the decision. Can we make comments in the public about that?
Um, you are allowed to. It, it is, uh, one of the areas where I I think we like to stress comity and, uh, support, support for indecorum and support for the decision that's made that you don't go out of your way to criticize um, decisions after the fact. Um, it is entirely within your discretion, but it is in our experience as local government attorneys, it's one of the areas that can really, um, lead to more um, friction, uh, between commissioners and county, city counselors um, in future going forward, um, as if, you know, if there is a lot of criticism of past actions. So that's, it's just, that's kind of advice that we give, uh, but.
And sometimes it's just the public. Sometimes it's just the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, not city counts. You know what I mean?
No, totally.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, doing it from the dais is one thing or just like out in the community.
Of course.
So conflicts of interest, um, you know, it's a bit of a squishy concept. Um, you have to disclose any conflict, um, and recuse if you have a substantial interest in an application. The definition of a pecuniary interest in the outcome of a transaction or a family relation with a person directly involved, um, blah, blah, blah. It, you know, it's a tough one. It's case by case and we can help you figure that out. You know, it's generally like, are you going to make money off of it? Is it going to affect the value of your property? That, you know, that can be tough if it's a broad rezoning, uh, of an area. I think our general rule is if you're in the notice uh, area of a, uh, of a rezoning ordinance, probably better to err on the side of recusing, but also it's a legislative act. Um, and so, you know, this, the standards are a little bit more relaxed. So we're happy to, happy to help you all navigate that. Sometimes, uh, if it's just like, oh, I'm friends with the applicant. Um, just disclosing that is fine because you're, you're not going to, you know, gain anything financially from it. It's really where there's like a financial interest in the outcome. Uh, that's where, that's where we have a concern that, um, while we trust all of you to make fair decisions that, that could still influence something and and it's not even if it does or it doesn't, it's whether a judge looking at it from the outside could say, well, that person could have been influenced. So then, open meetings, um, as Commissioner Waller mentioned, that's three or more of you talking about any official business. Talking emails, text messages, Snapchat, I guess. I don't know.
Disappears.
Yeah, right. It's tempting. So, um, but, uh, yeah, we ask you not to, um, to engage in that, that type of conduct. You know, it can get the, the city into trouble, um, and paying attorney's fees if there's a violation. And, you know, it generally, uh, erodes public trust in the overall process and procedures, um, of planning commission and city council, um, if there's a, a meeting, um, you know, we can have executive sessions uh, to discuss certain, uh, very specific things that are allowed in the open meetings law statute. Mainly for planning commission would be about the legal advice on a specific application. If there's some matter that I think as city attorney, we, we say we want to counsel you on, um, then that is, uh, and generally would not be about the actual application. It might be about a process being used or something like that. Um, but typically planning commissions don't have executive sessions, uh, very often, so.
So, so here's another question on that. So let's say when talk to Commissioner Conrington or whatnot, but, but I could call up Emery or Hannah if I had a question about the package. I mean, is that okay? Or am I getting now a different take on material than?
You can call, you might not get an answer. Um, you know, eh, email is, I think, the most transparent way to do it and kind of the easy thing about that is then we can just, we can put that email into the record. So all the commissioners see the answer that's being given by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
And then Colorado Open Records Act or Cora, um, is a law that, um, basically makes all city records presumptively open, uh, to public inspection. These include your emails and text messages about anything about city business. And so, um, you know, there have not been, in my experience, uh, requests for planning commission, correspondence about, about matters, um, but it's definitely within the, the ambit of Cora. There are exceptions. Um, request for legal advice is one of them. But, uh, it's just something to remember when, when sending an email to each other. Um, or if you, you know, if an applicant reaches out to you, for example, that's going to be, uh, a public record. Anything you write back to an applicant would be a public record. So it's, you know, and, and my, my advice generally is if an applicant reaches out to you, include city staff on, uh, on any response and kind of seek some advice on how to respond to an applicant. It is, it is one of those things. You know, prior to an application being filed, uh, applicants or owners or potential owners will reach out and try to discuss a project with individual planning commissioners or city counselors and uh, it's one of those areas that we struggle with because there's no pending application, um, that where like the quasi judicial rules kick in. Um, but it's also one of those areas where like, if someone develops enough of a record that you had made up your mind beforehand, that could be considered prejudicial. Um, and so we, you know, we like to keep those, those discussions kind of more in a more formal setting.
I'm just kind of curious. I know that city council gets, uh, core requests constantly. What does that cost the city? There's got to be a, be a, I mean, you know, do we know what that costs the city when somebody does that?
We charge a fee. I think it's now thirty four dollars an hour.
How much is it?
I think it's like forty one dollars now.
Yeah.
Forty one dollars.
State raised it this year. But yeah, it, it does cost this.
And it causes the, it costs the individual who pulls the core request. It costs them that money?
Yes, they have to pay that. Um, first hour is free. And then, um, after that, yeah, any it's an hourly rate and then any costs associated with like copying.
Copies and such.
Yep, we did conflicts of interest. And then I know, um, Commissioner Waller had some, some notes on process. Um, he has a kind of a general rules and regulations for meeting procedures, um, that I can't remember if I've seen that before. It's a, you know, it, it, it kind of outlines the, how a meeting should proceed. The code says we should follow Robert's Rules of Order, which if anybody has ever cracked it, it's like an absurd thing for municipal bodies to follow. Um, there's a helpful document called Bob's Rules that was developed by, uh, municipal attorney out of, uh, the front range. That is kind of generally what we help you all follow. So, you know, we have these different types of motions, but we don't have to follow these formal processes. Like, you know, tonight we had a friendly amendment. You know, we, for the purposes of a quasi judicial hearing, we like to make sure that there's enough of a record of what's happening that a judge can understand how a decision was made, but you don't need to have you know, all the arcane motion procedures and everything that Robert's rules has. So that's kind of, that's how we move forward with, um, with procedures. You know, I think Commissioner Waller has, uh, and commissioners before him have, you know, just moved through the hearings, um, very fluidly, but it's, you know, we generally have staff, uh, presentation of the matter, questions, applicant presentation, questions, open to public comment. And then a motion and a second and, uh, commission discussion of the motion. And at that point, you can amend the motion, you can table it. Um, there's all sorts of things that can happen at that time, but that is generally what, uh, practitioners recommend, um, is having, having that type of process. And limiting, an important piece of it is limiting kind of the back and forth um, between the commission and the public. Um, you know, the public can present their, their comments, but we're not, the commission's not there to ask questions of the public. And so that's, that's kind of why that process is there. So, um, Pete, did you have any other?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I did. Um, so I, I know I'm not, Hannah can't, I think I talked to Hannah about this once before, but, but what this is Hannah is the rules, regulations and procedures. I think when I first joined, I don't know if everyone did all y'all get this thing. So I, so I see some heads. I see some heads nodding the other way. Yeah, it sounds like Joy and Amy. Got it. Huh? Well, it was for me. I mean, I, I kind of keep it to just, you know, keep myself straight, which is a pretty difficult thing, but but I do the best I can. But so, so, um, I, I don't know if, if it's a um, in, in fact, I think it would be a good thing for everybody to have to just kind of go through it. And it, and it, it talks about a lot of the, you know, Bob's rules or whatever. Is that, 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 that's Robert's?
Yeah.
Younger brother.
That's the
Did that come from Hannah?
I don't know, Hannah, did, did I get this from you?
You sure did. And I will make sure that everyone has it in their inbox as soon as I'm back at the office.
Okay.
And Hannah, do you know, is that, that's been adopted by resolution by city council at some point?
I believe so. This is a document that's been handed down through the time of director. I have to trace back its lineage, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's a great document. I think it's a good document. So I, I've got, so I'll just ask a couple of questions. I have on it just would help me, but I mean, I think most of it's pretty explanatory, but a quorum is four.
Four.
We have four people, then we have a quorum and we can have a meeting. Is that?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And yeah, the procedure for public hearings is good. So let's say, let's say we had four and we had a tie vote, then is it, then is that, um, thumbs down? Is that, does that mean that the?
We changed this provision of the code recently, um, because we had a, an issue. It used to be that it, uh, it failed if it tied, uh, and you couldn't revisit it. What was it? Hannah, do you remember? Was it six months or a year?
I think it was a year.
Yeah. And so, yes, now a, a tie is, it does fail, but it doesn't, it doesn't kill the application. You can keep having new motions until, you know, assuming you know, assuming it's a motion to approve, um, then you, you can keep submitting new motions until a motion passes.
So, or it's, or, or like it's continued?
Yeah. Well, right, but you, right, but you can have us another motion the same night at the same hearing.
Yeah.
Um, so if you have a motion to approve and it fails by tie vote, um, and it, you know, it, I, I, I think it is the right thing to do, even if a motion to approve fails, is to then bring back a motion to deny. Um, so that we have that clean record.
Okay.
And then you have findings supporting the denial.
And then, and then that's kind of part of what the staff report is anyway that you have at the end.
The alternative.
If it fails, then you have the alternative.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, cool. Yeah, and then on, on the site visits, it would be, and, and I, and I know we've talked about this in the past, that let's say there's some big, big, you know, development thing happening, then, then, then we could, one of us could send you a note, Hannah, and just say, hey, I, we, we think this is big enough, we'd like to lay our eyes on it collectively, and then it becomes, might even push it out a month. Because then it becomes like a, uh, like a public record, is that right? Does that have to be noticed when we do a site visit?
Yes, we would add it to the notice. Hannah, were you talking?
Yeah, so it, it would, we would notice it, we'd add it to our agenda. Um, usually we've done that on the same day as the planning and zoning commission meeting. I will say it hasn't been our habit to push out an application to the next month based on P and Z wanting a site visit. We try and incorporate that within the timeline of the development permit. Um, if you guys can recall, we have deadlines for, the applicant has a deadline to apply and staff has an eight week deadline to get it ready to you. We do try and abide by those timelines, so we would try and coordinate a meeting that works for the majority of people. Um, I believe the last time we tried that, we were not able to get everyone at the meeting location for the site visit. And unfortunately, I'm sure Richard can elaborate on this, but if you are not present for the site visit of an application, then you can't sit for the vote on that application later at the meeting.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay.
Yeah, and that, and that goes to the left, like, we want everybody to have the same experience with the hearing record um, when making a decision.
Okay, and then there's, this is kind of a weird one. But it's, it says the chairperson shall determine whether offered testimony is material or relevant to the hearing. So I'm assuming that that's, that's kind of your job to keep us straight on that, Richard, or is that right?
Yeah, I mean, an example, um, is, you know, if somebody doesn't like an applicant and comes starting, I've seen this happen, who comes in and starts imputing their reputation, um, you know, you're not necessarily going to cut them off, but if it gets really bad, you can cut them off, um, and say this just isn't relevant. Um, because, you know, the purpose in having that in there is to put the record straight, um, and basically, you know, you could say we're striking this from the record, um, that nobody is to consider the public testimony that was just given about, well, this, this guy did that on this development over there, and I didn't like how that, how that worked.
Does that, does that apply to discriminatory language as well?
Yeah, I think it, it applies to anything that's not relevant to the sections of code that you are considering. And I know in some hearings, it gets really hard because people bring in all types of matters.
I have another question. Can I ask it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I feel like we have a really well-rounded commission here, but is it your opinion that the more opinions you hear from commission, the better we are as a body? And that we don't, you know, like one Commissioner Joy doesn't dominate conversation or, um, I mean, we should be well-rounded in our considering of these, these matters. And we shouldn't just, um, automatically propose things just to do so. We should kind of all be engaged in this.
I, I, I agree with that, yes.
I mean, I think it gives our body a, a bigger weight, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I think having different, uh, perspectives on, right, the, the weight of, you know, there can be a list of A to Q of different standards and how do you balance all of those like evenly? But, um, different commissioners are going to prioritize certain standards, probably just kind of reflexively. And I think, uh, having those different perspectives on planning commission and making sure that the different standards and requirements are being brought forward and discussed, uh, is an important piece, um, and, and ensuring a defensible outcome. Having, having that in the record, like, oh, the judge can look at like standard I, they really discussed that one.
Right.
Diversity of opinion.
Record, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, and I, I guess I'd just like to echo that too. I think sometimes it's okay to ask questions, even if you know the answer. Just because I, you know, like, like the meeting minutes tonight, I thought Hannah, we're very good. And, and, and I think one of the things that makes it good is that if someone looks at the, the minutes of here's what we said, if we ask lots of questions, it seems like it's, it was very thoroughly discussed. You know, so we're, as we're trying to protect the public domain or whatever it is, you know, public interest to do the correct thing. So I think it's, um,
And it, and it's, it's important, you know, the, the standard in court for appeal of a land use decision is, um, just to make the, the decision was not arbitrary and capricious or abusive discretion or, uh, uh, exceeding authority of the body. And so that is a relatively relaxed standard, uh, compared to other court proceedings. And, you know, they don't, you generally do not have individual testimony in, in court in these proceedings. The judge just looks at the record. The parties submit briefs on that record and legal argument. Um, and the judgment is rendered based on that, not with, with live witnesses coming into court or anything. And, um, uh, you know, given that it is a relatively uh, relaxed standard, the judge is not going to second guess you. It's kind of similar to the, if you, the Supreme Court, it's actually the same, same standard that had been applied at the, uh, and, and still is in some cases, the Supreme Court case, where everyone was talking about the Chevron doctrine. Um, is, is giving some deference to government decision makers and saying, you know, maybe this is, the judge saying, maybe this isn't the decision I would have made, but I can tell that they reasoned their way through this process and came to a decision. Um, and it wasn't influenced by some ulterior motive that is present in the record.
Okay. You know, the questions or comments or? Yeah, I, I guess one thing I'll just throw out here that I'll echo too, I think we have a good commission. I think we have good perspectives and other than maybe myself, y'all are pretty smart. No, I think it's good. I mean, it is good. So I kind of echo what Joy said. I think it's a good thing. Thanks, Richard.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. Thanks, Hannah's cat. Okay, um, now Commissioner comments. Great.
I think it was a good meeting. I enjoyed the questions and it was a good job, everybody.
Thank you. I'm not going to call everyone, just poke your thing. Take care of it.
Yeah, um, this was a great conversation. Thanks for, um, the refresher and answering some questions here. And, uh, I do want to follow up on the method for bringing things before staff that we might want to consider. Cause you know, every couple of months, we're like, oh yeah, we should really look at that somewhere down the road. So is it all right to just email a list and like, you know, let's look at dark sky lighting ordinance, let's look at gable and siding, like bunches of little things that really don't have an overarching code or something. Oh, yes, they do. Well, that's really cute, but they're going to be in little bits and pieces all over. Yeah. Cause people come to us with those types of things too. You know, what can you do about this? Well, I personally can't do much, but bring it to, you know, staff's attention. So what is the protocol? Just make a list and mail it?
So, um, you know, normally when, when city council gives staff direction, um, okay, sorry, kitty. Princess has the answer. City council votes on something, they, it's a majority of council that pushes something forward. So we do need to have some sort of mechanism where it's, it's something that you all agree or the majority of you agree should be reviewed. Otherwise, staff could spend quite a bit of time running down lists of things that might not hold all of your guys' interest.
My pet projects, yeah.
So, um, so let me think about that because it, it hasn't, normally we've handled that in a work session format, like a topic has come up. Sometimes in, in comments from you guys and we get like head nods of like general, like, yeah, we should look at the lighting ordinance and staff say something like, funny enough, we've been getting lots of comments about lighting in town. So yes, we will look into that. Um, so I, I think I can come back to you at the next meeting with a little bit more of process wise of maybe, but I think in coun- uh, council comments, commission comments, if you propose something like that and want to get general head nods so that we can see four of you think that whatever the topic is, warrants review. And then if staff thinks we need to get a little bit more input from council to think if they warrant review of that item, then we can do it that way.
Yeah, and I realize that covering all those dinky little things can be really time consuming. And, uh, but thanks for that, and I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Okay, one of the dinky things I want to ask about is a client of mine told me that the city has, um, code that does not allow for a home to be painted white in city limits or a, is, is this true?
That is true. Um, the civic circumstances, we have under our residential design standards, uh, materials and color choices. And so white is, uh, white and off-white. Um, it's specific and don't make my COVID brain recall that exact section of code right now, because it's not going to happen. Though it's not all, uh, residential applications, but quite a bit, yes.
And I did get that code from Emery, so I can, um, it's zero seven zero zero four zero zero eight zero.
Holy moly.
I would have missed that one.
Okay.
I just wanted to, uh, recommend a column to everyone. Uh, Gail Schwartz wrote a column in the Aspen Daily News. She's the CEO of Haptap for Humanity, former state senator. Recommend reading that about, uh, housing, believe it or not.
About the daily?
Yeah. It was the Daily News, I think. I've read it in the Daily News, at least maybe it was published in more than one spot, but, uh, uh, a organization had conducted a survey of Coloradans and ninety percent had ranked housing as an extremely or very urgent matter. And, um, I guess my other note on that is I think preemption, I, I know I've said this before, but preemption is looming if, if the city doesn't, if communities in general don't start taking matters into their own hands.
Thank you, John. I don't have anything. Okay, Hannah, director comments.
What a lovely segue, uh, Commissioner Houghton. Um, so for next month's meeting, we actually are going to give you guys your requested affordable housing update on city efforts, programs, all things that we have been doing. We don't have any immediate applications at this time, but as always happens, we might have something that gets thrown into the mix. Um, and perhaps we'll look at, uh, work session topics if you guys are interested in, in doing that again. Um, other than that, I can say I do have wonderful news that our housing development manager started today. Not today, Monday, excuse me, today's Tuesday. Whatever day it is, uh, Kevin Reyes, um, has joined us. So he has been at the office while I have been out and managing housing while I'm away. And it's going well so far, so two thumbs up. Excited to have that position filled. I think that is all the updates that I have from my end, unless you guys have any questions.
Any question?
April is the last, the twenty-fourth is us?
The fourth, the fourth Tuesday. Whatever date that is.
It'll be the twenty-fourth.
Will be?
Yeah.
Okay. No more questions. Okay, we will adjourn our P and Z meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye. Get healthy.